Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call a meeting to order. It is Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes for reports received and filed.
Yes, we have the Collectors' August 2025 fees and the Sheriff's' August 2025 fees.
Okay. Commissioner Committee, ladies and gentlemen, for 10 meetings.
We've got our salary study orientation today. Wednesday, Transportation Meeting, are you going to that then?
Either one of us.
Just go ahead if you can.
Okay.
Just one of us, since it's a private.
It's a closed meeting, I asked again.
So Thursday, I've been in a presentation at South School for some awards. All Waste Management District meeting postponed to this Thursday. NRA Dinner Thursday night. Saturday is the Wartsville, so there's been Knights of Columbus barbecue at the Knights of Columbus in Wartsville, 11:05. I think that is it.
Okay, let's see, I've got very little here today. You mentioned the Chamber of Transportation, so that's covered.
Yes, sir.
Friday is, Cole County is gonna present a program to the Learning and Retirement Group here in Jefferson City. And several elected officials and several directors will be with me at the Learning and Retirement's event on Friday afternoon.
Okay. Well, tonight I have the USS Jefferson City Submarine Committee meeting. Wednesday, Transportation. And then Wednesday night, we have the 250th Committee meeting. And then Friday is the United Day of Caring, and I've got Leadership Forum at 7:30. Saturday is the MU South Carolina game. And then Sunday is the Russellville Fall Supper. And Monday, I have the Coed, Coad Executive Board meeting at 3 o'clock. So that is all I've got. Any Commission comments?
Just a quick comment. I listened to a meeting or two since we've got the new equipment. And some of us, including myself, are not quite loud enough. Are we, we need to tweak. Do you agree with that, Dawn? Have you listened?
Yes.
Some of us are hard to hear when you play back the YouTube video on our meeting. So just, that means, you know, come to the table, speak up at the, at this area. If anybody wants to check up on us by what we said, it's hard to hear. And do something about it.
Good. All right. Well, we have the New Business Accounts Payable.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending your review.
I'll make a motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval and signing of professional services contract with AP Triton. Good morning.
Good morning.
It's a good thing I'm not leaving.
Right, I'm time brother.
9:04. How was your commute?
It's been a busy morning.
I'm down the hill.
If that's where I was coming from, then, then it wouldn't have been bad at all. This is a renewal for another year of professional service contract with AP Triton to prepare our GMT report, our Ground Emergency Medical Transport Reimbursement Report. Basically, this is the program that allows us to get federal dollars to offset the loss that we take on Medicare costs. And these folks have done an excellent job in preparing that report. It's quite complex and looks at all aspects of our financial and operations to compile these numbers. And if you recall, we initially used a company for the first couple of years, and that didn't go so well, and we actually ended up having to pay a lot of money back. Ever since we started using this organization, we've been owed extra money. So they are very conservative in their approach. So it's $7,500 to prepare the report, and then they take 3% of the gross GMT return as well. So just asking that we sign this today so that they can get to work on the 24-25 cost report.
Same cost as before, is that what you said?
Yep, yep, no change in the terms.
You just told us what the cost was. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve and sign the professional services contract with AP Triton for the 24-25 GMT return.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I didn't get a sticker on it. I should be third to last page or second to last page for signature. Sorry.
You're late. No sticker?
I'm sorry.
I gave them mine.
Okay.
You know you got help in us here.
Discussion of 2025-23 General Cleaning and Janitorial Services.
We bid out the cleaning and janitorial services countywide. We had seven vendors that submitted a response. I put this on the agenda just to see how we wanted to move forward with this bid and their services. We kind of had the bids all over the board from 234,000 all the way up to 734,000 left countywide. And then also, in the meantime, Public Works contractor out there has given notice that he's no longer gonna be able to clean out there. So after talking with Jill, we've talked about that if we move forward or not move forward, or if we don't move forward with this contract, that we need to bid that out separately. Again, because we might get different pricing as to building, cleaning the one building versus the whole county.
Eric, were you shocked about losing your provider?
A little bit. It was coincidental to the fact that the county was bidding the rest of the buildings and considering that. It just kind of happened and... I gotta speak louder, right, Harry? Okay, I'll, I'll try to root for that. So we were a little surprised, but they're a little bit older in age, and they do come from Columbia. And I think it just was getting to the point that they just couldn't do it anymore effectively. So they wanted to step down. So now we have to look for somebody else. I think ideally, the contractor that does the EMS Headquarters building, that would be fitting if they would do ours too. And looked at opportunities to see if we could just piggyback off of that. But in talking with Jessica, who had communicated with Jill about that, would probably just need to bid that out separately. It might not be applicable to a cooperative procurement type of situation or a piggyback or a change order. So we'll just do that if you decide not to proceed with the overall contract. And we'll probably need to do that pretty soon. They said about a month, but they would stay on until we found somebody to take over.
Well, I think they came up a little more than what I expected. I don't think they're out of line for what I think they proposed. I did not do the walkthrough with you all to see what the scope of the project was gonna be. But I don't think that this bid, I mean, I think it may be a little high, but I don't think it's necessarily doing the same as what we're doing now. I think we're gonna get more out of this than we would what we're doing with our staff. So.
Well, I was, those prices kind of, kind of got me. But, you know, we still have to provide the materials and that. We're still gonna have our maintenance people are still gonna be on our payroll. They will just, instead of doing janitorial, they will become just basically maintenance and repairs and things like that. So we're not, it's not like we're saving by, by taking FTEs away to do this. So we're still gonna have those salaries to pay, and then this on top of it. So.
And we do still have to buy the supplies. And I gave you guys that amount of, it was about 60,000 in 2024 of what we spent on.
It's gonna probably be closer to 70 this year. Be 70,000 is probably this year.
Jessica, do we have this from you in an email?
Yeah.
What's the date on that email?
August 22nd at 11:01. I printed it.
I was kind of using our Public Works and some of the other cleaning, you know, we were getting done and kind of trying to guess what I thought it would come up at. And like I said, it came up more than what I initially thought.
You let the builders determine.
I don't think we're getting the service, though, that this would provide here as far as janitorial.
Yes.
And, yeah, we would keep maintenance people on board, but then we would actually be doing maintenance if we, I mean, we've always got painting or some kind of floor stripping, different things we can be doing. I just, I don't feel like it's all getting done. I don't feel like the janitorial part's getting done. There's a lot of times you can find cockroaches in stairwells or stuff like that. So, and I don't think this would happen with this kind of cleaning. So that's kind of where I was coming out with wanting to push this a lot more. And then the price that we had at Public Works was, I always got the deal out there or how that worked, but somebody knew somebody and said, hey, you know, they, they do it. And they were coming from Columbia even. So I was surprised that we're getting this. So I wasn't ready to, you know, reject them yet, but they were considerably higher than what I anticipated. And if we did do this, and I think we would lose some people in maintenance at some point, either by attrition or, we're about to figure it out. But we got a lot of maintenance that needs to be done. We were just talking about Carnegie this morning. It's in kind of rough shape. We need to figure out what's going on with, you know, some things over there. So. At what point do we need to let them know if we're gonna pull the trigger or reject the bids? We got like a month or?
I think it was 60 days in the RFP. I'll have to go back and double check. And so we're approaching about almost a month now.
And you said how many days?
I think 60.
What do we need to do today? Are you set for some period of time yet, or?
As far as I'm aware right now, we are set until we have somebody to replace them. So if we can bid, it's about a 30-day window. Turn it around, probably 45 days before we can get somebody to do one. I think we're okay, but we need to make that decision now on what we're gonna do with our shop, independent of the whole county or together, if it's together.
When they did their walkthrough, did they, did they see Public Works and they saw EMS?
Yes.
And, so this price includes all of our, all of our properties?
Yep.
No, not Public Works. You said it does not include them, right?
It does include Public Works and Sheriff and EMS as add-ons that we could do later, since they all have, Sheriff has his own person. These two.
I thought you said we'd have to bid it separate.
But I'm sure it's an add-on, assuming they would get the rest of the buildings.
Yes, once the contract expires. After discussing with Jill, if, if this was rejected, then we would have to do a whole another RFP just for Public Works, because we could get different pricing if they're just cleaning Public Works and not coming down to do.
If this gets rejected, then we do Public Works separately. I didn't understand that, sorry. I've never heard of them. Are they around here at all?
I would assume that they would have, like, subcontractors or individuals that they would hire to come and do it.
Do we have references?
We do. I didn't reach out to them. I know, I've reached out to people at Jan and King. After Hours Business, they're the ones that clean EMS. And those were really the only two that I reached out on so far.
Jan and King.
Did this include the Juvenile Center?
Yes.
And probably Juvenile, and I'm speaking up for Ford, and I may be wrong, just correct me, but there's probably specific background investigations that have to be done for those individuals before they could come into those facilities.
Yes, that's included in here. Okay.
I'm not ready today to award one. I think there's, there's still a lot of questions. And if we narrow it down to maybe two, then I think we do need to check references. But I'm trying to keep from spending money next year.
We just want to table this for a week or two, and we can chew on it and go from there. Or do you, if you want to just either awarded or rejected, I guess are the options.
Yep.
I always say let's hold off on awarding or rejecting, and let's do a little bit more thinking and research and...
And then wait on Public Works as well?
I don't know that I want to wait too long. So if, if we're not gonna do anything with this, we just go ahead and bid ours separately, see what happens with that. And if you decide next week or two to go ahead and accept, we can either pull the bid or we can just do ours separately and you not take the add-on of Public Works.
That sounds prudent.
Yeah.
So the way these came out, though, I mean, are we gonna, why aren't we bidding all these separate, doing separate things? Because they should all be under maintenance. So if we're talking about not spending money and this is too expensive, but we're gonna do it for certain buildings, I'm not, I guess that's kind of where I'm struggling with all of this, too, is if we're gonna do this, this general cleaning and janitorial services is gonna be a different service than what we're actually doing right now, in my opinion. I think it's gonna be a better service than other cleaning and such that's not necessarily being done on a daily basis. So I guess if you want to bid them, that's fine. We can see where they come up with. But what are you gonna do if they come up kind of like these all over the board and maybe more than what we're wanting to spend on? Because we're having troubles keeping people, especially in janitorial positions. Do we even have janitorial anymore? They're all maintenance.
Yep. We converted it all back to maintenance one three or four years ago.
I think Eric's comments are okay, that we're not, we're not going down a road that we can't turn around and come back on. I didn't spend enough time to drill into these numbers, except not, you know, just looking at the volume. Shocking, if that's the term. So it may be that we'll find the clones of what you have now there. That's all they want, is that size operation. So I'm willing to do, kind of put it on a one-week hold, this, this kind of thing, and in the meantime, crank this out, what you're, what you suggested.
You agree with that?
Yes.
You agree with the week to choke on it or chew on it?
Okay, then we will add this to next week's agenda.
I'll get that back on there to decide on that. Just for budgetary purposes only, if you're not gonna reduce anything, when currently these buildings are being cleaned, most of them by the current maintenance staff, which is actually ours, you know, so if you're not reducing FTEs and taking on this much of a burden to the county's budget, it's gonna be major. So Jay needs to look into it, too.
That's kind of what I'm looking at.
But we'll put it back on there for next week.
You got more people on your budget this year request?
No, I'm keeping the same. The only thing I had it was a, maybe a part-time person from May to August to help with some other mulligan stuff. Just hire a part-time high school kid or something that can do stuff like that. I did not add any extra FTEs at all.
And he's fully staffed right now.
Yes.
Janitorial stuff's so fun.
I think Jeff, next year we get to bid out cleaning supplies.
I have a year to chew on that one.
Okay, then we will keep moving ahead. Approval and signing of MDFB Tax Credit Disbursement Request Number Three from the Soccer Club.
And, you know, this is an in-and-out for the county here. It's 57,000. Jill hasn't approved that for number three. And we'll move that money back to the soccer group when we receive it. Asking for approval.
I'll make a motion to sign and approve payment of the MDFB Tax Credit Disbursement Request Number Three from the Soccer Club.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
When we say the Soccer Club, I want that to say United Capital City Soccer Club.
Yes.
I think supposedly they're supposed to have their first tournament next month, but I don't know if they're gonna get that done.
It's been a while since.
We were out there for the airshow dinner Friday night. There's still a lot to do. Okay, approval and signing of 2026 LVCP Grant Application.
This is the Local Violent Crime Prevention Grant that we submitted for. You guys have already approved for submission. This is the actual application. We're asking for $25,000 to purchase six Panasonic MDTs. And if you'll notice, I have a sticker where same signs.
Thank you.
He's ignoring you.
No, he's ignoring me.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the 2026 LVCP Grant Application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Approval and signing of Change Order Number One dash 2025 for Asphalt Overlay Program.
So originally, Public Works was gonna overlay Bryant Road with our asphalt crew. And we decided to change order this into the contractor's work. Overall, this would increase the cost of construction by $100,154.19. After doing some math and stuff based on our pickup price versus what we're getting it through the contractor to be laid in place, it just made more sense to have the contractor do the work versus our crews to free them up to do some other work for us.
It's saving us money, because you always save us money.
We're, we're spending the money to get another road in good shape. How about that? So what happens yearly with our asphalt crew? Well, they would call it box, some paved roads, and that's a thinner lift of asphalt. And it's a good preventative maintenance, and it can buy quite a bit of life. Sometimes we will come through with a chip seal afterwards over that a couple of years later. They were gonna do that on this road, but got to looking at the cost and the fact that they had to do the whole road, and it just made a little more sense just to go ahead and do the overlay. It's a thicker overlay. So, and it did from time, we kind of make these decisions fluid in making some of these decisions, you know? Sometimes you gotta adjust throughout the year as things change and all that. And so normally, we don't do that big of a change order and asphalt overlay program, but this one, it just made more sense to do that. So we're just swapping some money around. It'll cost a little more just because it's thicker, but, and it's a little additional price per ton, but in result, it's, it'll be a better long-term product.
Sheriff, I've got stickers also, and we were both on.
Look at you. You're on top, it's just EMS, it's, you know, lacking. Some of those have real jobs.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign Change Order Number One dash 2025 Asphalt Overlay Program.
Second.
Okay.
He must still be in Hawaii.
Any discussion? You know, I stretch this out as long as we can, at least go half an hour. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Well, that is all I show on our agenda until 11:00 AM, so. You want to kill three minutes so we can say we...
Let's see. I would, I would ask if you have the time to go back and listen to this and see if you spoke loud enough. And if you did, congratulations. But I don't think there's gonna be that many congratulations. I think we're, you're gonna have to tweak, well, let's just wait and see. I, I think we're, we're not getting the word out literally to constituents who might be following online. We'll see.
I do have an announcement.
So you had a name?
I think I get used to speaking up. It used to be fine, then you had the microphones and all that, and if you weren't talking in, but, so our security system at our shop and facility is up and running, fully operational. It took a little, it was a little bit of a process. We had to get some new doors installed. They were needing to be installed anyway, but they had to be compatible with the new drag plates and all that. So other county facilities have had this, we just hadn't. So we're getting close to every employee that needs to get into our shop or inside our gate to get fuel or whatever after hours. We'll be set up to do that. If, if we're not there, we're really close. Company did a really good job getting everything set up, and I'm, I've been impressed how seamless the process works as far as, you know, adding and deleting people and giving them credentials to go here, there, everywhere. So it's, it's been, it's been a good process, and it's, it's definitely a big improvement for our security, our facility. And what it's gonna allow is your department and your department to be able to, after hours, get inside the gate. The gate will close behind them, so it's secure. You don't have to worry about, you know, one of your deputies being out and, you know, unprotected or whatever, getting fuel. But then if it's cold out, or they need a little, take a break or whatever, they can go inside the shop. So they'll be able to get in that door, only not the rest of the facility. They don't have to have a key. They could use their fob and their key card or whatever to get in. So it's allowed a lot better, it's just more convenient for, for you, for you all, your staff going in. So I'm, I'm very happy that the Commission was, granted us and, you know, gave us... So I'm very happy that the commission was, granted us and, you know, gave us the funds to do this. And I think it's a big benefit to the county as a whole to have us at our facility.
So when's as soon as we can hear back, let's say, from two of the users as to what they think about it? When, when would that?
They're already using it. I know you, you have access on your card to get into the gate. I can, I think I got email in to you when you talked about whether they want to do their meeting to building or not, but.
I thought that was taken care of, but.
There's different, it's a little, you have to select the right credential to give and the right, you know? And it's a little bit about scheduling, and it's a little bit of learning curve to learn how to set things up for people to have access to different places. But we're getting there, and, but I, you know, I think it's, you know, the gate itself and getting in and out and all that, and having their own card instead of the number that is the same number that we've had for seven, eight years, I think it's a lot better, so.
Security-wise, it was a great idea.
Yeah. What happens on the delivery side out there? When the fuel is delivered there, what, what's the mechanics there?
So we can give them a couple of different options. If we get a call, and let's say I'm at home, I can push one button, and it opens the gate for them. They can get in. And then when they come to get out, it's a, it's a magnet that they senses in the pavement that opens up and they can get out. Or we can give them a temporary code, or we can give them a fob. So like our chip seal contractor, they store their chips up in their yard. So for a week, if we want to just give them a fob or a punch code, and then we deactivate it when they're done. So it's, there's a lot, it's a lot better than just giving them a key to the gate or leaving the gate open after hours or something like that, so.
Are paying somebody overtime to come in and open and close the damn gate, so.
Yeah.
It's a big plus. That gate, the automatic gate and the security system, and the last we've done in the light was that the last five years, probably six years.
The gate's probably seven, eight years or so, but, I mean, just overall improvements we've made.
Yeah, that's outstanding.
Like I said, we appreciate the commission's support in getting this done.
We went to, Western District Commissioner Otto and I went to our, our central.
West.
West Central Commissioners meeting last Thursday in Harrisonville. And we met at their public works. And, but we talked to old vendors for asphalt from Kansas City. Most of the vendors that were there were, were out of our area. I think I did pick up a catalog. They had one where they have some lifts and stuff we can put in that we could lift ambulances with.
We can do that now.
You probably got the, yeah. Anyway, it was interesting, but Cole County, we will be hosting the next meeting in March. So we'll have to come up with something really good.
And just so you know, Eric, several of the ones that we've been to recently, the event was held in their Public Works facility.
Is that right?
And they were spick and span, and they cleaned those places up, so just.
You better go up to bid.
You do know that other than probably this courthouse, our building's the oldest in the county and hasn't really been remodeled over the years, just an FYI.
You know, being, since it's going to be in March, I mean, we could be dodging salt trucks and everything else if we had it up there, right? So I suspect that's probably not on the calendar. But, I mean, the event is on the calendar, location to be determined, okay?
Well, if we need to provide accommodations, we'll do our best.
We are, we're in the west central, which on several occasions have taken us almost to the Kansas border for this meeting. It's, it's a, it's a task to get there, but you learn a lot.
I'll add another thing. Our county engineer has been hard at it trying to get these grant projects wrapped up and bid out. That is a process, and especially when you have ones that have fifty or sixty easements to get. It's very time-consuming, and the way this played out this, this cycle, whatever, we have four coming due within a few months of each other. So Tanner Bridge is the big one, and that's ready to bid here in a couple of weeks. Give it a go.
So are you getting clearance from MoDOT?
Yeah, we're waiting on clearance from MoDOT. We also have a smaller Stirbridge Road, and that one's close as well. We have that CDBG out in South Brooks, and then we have the sidewalk project. So we'll have a lot happening in the grant arena here. We've decided we're going to take a little break on grants for a little bit. It is very, very administrative-heavy, and it can, it can wear you out if you really don't have somebody dedicated to it all the time. So we got to get through that cycle, but we'll be looking for more in upcoming years. But the Tanner Bridge project, that is a big project. It includes some road realignment, cleaning up that whole section through there. It's going to turn out real good. Hopefully, that'll be the last major project on Tanner Bridge for a while. It's been a period of several projects over the last few years to get some of that area cleaned up, because that's our, probably our heaviest-traveled two-lane road in the county right now, that or Bald Hill.
Can you send me the, the scope of that project? What, does that come all the way from Interstate B to the bridge? One seventy-nine, I'm.
Yeah, yes. Actually, a little past the bridge, too.
Because that was going to be in two phases, right?
We, we, there's two separate projects. One's a safety and one's the bridge. They have to be separate because one's grant-funded, one's not. It's sales tax-funded through our own sales tax, but they, they bid together, and they have to be awarded together. But yeah, it's the whole stretch through there.
Okay, that's the kind of way I understood. I want to make sure I was telling people right. And that we're going to go to bid as soon as possible on that. Possibly award by this fall, maybe see some stuff happening. How long is that going to take to do that bridge, you think?
Yup. It'd be a full, a full year. It'd be a full year on, to get that back opened up, so.
Okay. I'll just make sure it didn't get more than that now.
We're getting used to roads being narrowed and everything else. It's been going east on Fifty.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
A motion to stand in recess until eleven AM.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Okay. Actually, if you could hold on just one minute, we're going to have to go back into session, and then we'll, we'll get you started. All right.
Yeah, okay. It is September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five. We will go back into open session. How's that?
So, okay, proceed now?
Yes. Yes, you can start. I'll just make an introduction.
Recording in progress.
Okay, we have it.
Okay. This is Cole County, and you guys all know why we're here. We're here for the salary study. The commission decided to take the step into getting a salary study done, and Condrey and Associates is online here to explain how this procedure is going to unfold for us. So I will turn this over to you.
All right, well, thanks so much, unstable Condrey, and very happy to be working with you. I hope my change manager, Mrs. R. Jean, will say a word.
Yes, good morning. We're very excited to be working with even the employees in your departments on this variant project.
And we also have Greg, we have Chris, who saw, who did the same work.
It's good morning, I just can't remember what Stephen James said. It's a pleasure to be here today.
So, we have plenty of this plan, it's about a fifteen-minute hour only that goes through. And Greg is going to lead us in that process. And as we get to the bottom of it, we have questions just to bring to ask. And then again, we'll open up questions, and we'll be able to answer any questions that you have. And so Greg, if you would start, I'd appreciate it.
All right. I think a good way for us to begin is by talking about the schedule for the project. It's not only introducing you to the current rate that's involved, but it also is going to introduce you to the different steps that are involved in the project. So here we are in the middle of September. This is the project orientation for your HR staff, department heads, and elected officials. And this is also the time that the position questionnaires should be distributed to all of your employees. I will talk a lot more about the position questionnaires in just a moment. And in October, we need those who are completed, the position questionnaires returned to us. We hope that those who will be returned to us in October, October, or in two, or a couple of weeks, I think, will be able to show a plenty of time to address that. And then, once those questionnaires have been completed and returned to us, they'll be able to conduct their employee interviews by telephone. We hope to schedule those and conduct those the week of October, twentieth. Once the questionnaires are completed, we have officially the process. We will then develop and conduct a custom salary survey, and we will go out into the marketplace and gather salary data that we can use to help you focus out. The salary survey will continue through November. So then in December, we will have developed preliminary cost estimate for you and presented a preliminary classification and payer report. By middle of January, we would hope to publish the final report. And then for twelve months after that, we'll provide free follow-up technical assistance just to help you out in any way we can to make sure you have a successful implementation of your impact. So as I mentioned, it is time for the position questionnaires to be distributed. They should be completed by all of your personnel, including the department heads. Of course, elected officials would not be required to complete the questionnaire. And I'm going to take a few moments to walk through this questionnaire. Now you see what's there, answer any questions you want to have. But before we do that, let's just talk a bit about some tips for completing the position questionnaire. Our first recommendation is that you and the employees, department head supervisors, and employees read it over and then send it aside for a day. Instead of just sitting down and approaching it, never having seen it before, which is a good idea. Say what's there, think about it, and then come back the next day. If you can, in one setting, just sit down and complete it. It'll probably take an hour and a half to two hours to complete. For those of you who are in this meeting today, this will count as your read-through, so you'll know what's in this questionnaire after today. So you'll be ready to go ahead and complete it. It's okay for employees to work in groups. If you have multiple incumbents who are all in the same position, or it's different employees, all have the same job titles, all doing the same thing, then they can work together as a group to complete the questionnaire. They don't want to have to do it individually. And we would leave them up to the supervisors and department heads to decide that. The only thing we ask is that everyone who completes the questionnaire, if you want to cover sheet, so we have the name and information for everybody that is involved in the completion of that questionnaire. So if you have employees who are the only person in their job, the only ones in that job title, then they would certainly need to complete one of their roles. One of the biggest portions of the questionnaire is if we're asking you about major duties that are working on this, the duties that are performed in the job. And I want to go ahead and remind you of this again in a moment, but I want to go ahead and just say, we want you to keep the numbers, major duties, nonparticular tasks. What I mean by that is we can break our jobs down into hundreds and hundreds of thousands of individuals that are performing, and we're not looking for information in that level for employees that are major duties associated with the job. So we're talking about ten, twelve, maybe fifteen of the major duties that are working with us as part of the job. So it's, it's not meant to be too complex for someone to give us, but then kind of that view of the job and the major duty. These questionnaires are available in two formats. One of them is electronic, or emphasis on it's meant to be completed on your computer. We also have one that's a different, that can be printed out and distributed to your employees. For those employees who may not have easy access to the computer, or may not be comfortable with it, we can complete it. We want to emphasize how important the questionnaires are. The questionnaire is the main and integral part of your new pay system. And it is using a lot of different things in this project. What's happening in our infomercials, what's happening on our desks, we conduct the interviews, and we use the interviews to get extra information that's in addition to what was gathered in the questionnaire. When we're conducting job analysis and are classifying the job, we will rely on the information in that questionnaire in the interview process. I am prepared to implement the salary survey, but we use the information in the questionnaire to make sure that we're getting at these candidates who are assigned to other jobs and positions, so we're not just matching a title all the time. And then we use the questionnaire, again, we're going to know in the job descriptions of all the positions, because it's a very important, it's a main going walk of the system, and it is key to the timing of the survey. So what I'd like to do now is just take a look at this position questionnaire. And sort of review through it. If you don't have it in front of you, I think you should have it on my screen now. So if you see the first page is just a picture of a worker just looking for basic information about the employee. If he doesn't have the information about their length of service, or their current grade and stamp, that's all fine, you can get the information from your resources, but we would like to know the department, the employee's name, supervisor's name, and supervisor's time. And if you have multiple people with the same job, we will complete this questionnaire. And we want to have a cover sheet attached to it for each person who is involved. And that person is basically not reading information. We get to this box here, which is. Okay, we ask you to list the major duties. Of course, this is an interactive document, so it's not a box full of space. There's a version, printed version, because it's new, and it just has a box of extra. This is where we're asking, again, you provide us, and your employees provide us with that list of major duties. Again, we're looking for ten, twelve, maybe fifteen major duties. And then one was that list of those in there, they, they, they have to go along with the orders. Again, we would know that's going to subject us to the year, whatever time it is going to be. And just to know what's mentioned, what's, what the most important things are. And then we also ask that they estimate the percentage of time devoted to each job. In the past many years, employees have estimated the time spent on each of those major duties. We're not, we don't want anybody to stay online to estimate the amount of time. We're just looking, just have some rough figures. We want to know what are these major duties, and so we can do many times a year. So we give up a very small percentage of the time. It can still be very important, it doesn't take up a lot of time. So just kind of give us a rough estimate of where you're spending your time on those. My favorite one was a presentation just a couple of months ago. I got one where the employee just would add everything up, and it came to two hundred percent instead of one hundred percent, and they said that's because they didn't get everything in one hundred percent. They had to go to two hundred. No, wait, 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 wait a moment, that means, but just, you know, it doesn't have to be exact, but just give us the best estimate that you can, so. Then there's a question here where we ask which duties are most important, are difficult, and what makes those duties difficult. Then question two is a question about the topics required by the position. It's pretty striking what they're kind of asked that the employees, they have those list of major duties above. Number one, they put number one in the box here, and then they ask themselves, what do I have to know, what kind of skills do I have to have in achieving this, this work and to accomplish this successfully? So pretty striking work. We have some references here about this whole specialized equipment, machinery that we use. There may be some heavy equipment that they operate in. I mean, there may be software programs, different people will have different sorts of tools. And there, you can just tell us about that here. Do you have to have any licenses or certificates to perform, play or work? Do you have to have any special training or experience, how to use, experience? So, so just provide that kind of information there. Question three is a question about how the supervisor controls. In other words, this, these are questions about how the employee interacts with your supervisor. And you see here, this is just about check the rules that the plant tried to understand. Again, how, how the employees interact with all sorts of instructions they're getting, how they're going to be able to supervise and control. They reviewed. So we'll just check all those in the plant. Question four raises a series of questions about. Question four raises a series of questions about guidelines that you have to follow. And again, this will be gathered from everybody, so we need to know that there are those rules and regulations. Thank you for some of the manual of the airport traffic control devices. What else might be in the job? I accept the accounting principles, so just give us some sense of what guidelines or procedures that you follow. And then let us know whether those guidelines are very clear, or do you have to interpret them, or do you have to apply them to different situations? Then question six, it's about sometimes we have multiple sets of guidelines in our jobs, and maybe there's a situation which we not only have to interpret the guidelines, but we have to decide which set of guidelines apply in that situation. So just let us know that. Question five is a question about how far as in what makes a particular employee in a new position, what kind of options do you have on some of your work in that sort of things in the job? So people have to follow very strict guidelines that cause a lot of trouble, and if they're not following exactly, some people sit at a desk that's open to the public, and they are interrupting all day every day. My favorite answer in 20 years, question five, how much is your job complicated or difficult, someone actually put in the paperwork? And we know the encourage that we can all definitely understand that. I'm not going to bench this thing by many, but I have someone like that that I work with, it makes my job complicated. Question six is just a serious question, what is the scope and effect? What's the purpose of these items? That's just the basics. What is your basic part of your job? What is it about? What are you doing? How does that work with affect people in the department? How does it affect people outside the department, other organizations? Just help us understand what kind of job it is, what it's about, and how it affects others. Questions seven and eight are about personal contacts. We don't want to list the names, you know, and supervise all of your coworkers and kind of regulars, but we're looking at the source of, you can certainly say your coworkers, people in other departments, but we're looking for other education, like when interacting with vendors, or with contractors. And then question eight, we're asking you to tell us what's the purpose of those contacts. Do people have different jobs that interact with the manager, and they have different reasons? And you can have the laws, and you can be negotiating by terms of a minimum. So help us understand what sort of interactions you're having. Question nine is a question about the physical demands of the job. Just ask to check every one of those that applies, and we don't capture everything. They just face, give us extra information. Question 12, again, does the internship call, and does that apply within the department that you're in, and it's basically, give us any information. Question 12 is just, we want you to list all the people that you supervise. So if you are a supervisor, you would list the names and the titles of the employees that you supervise. And we understand that some people are functional supervisors, that may be the official supervisor, that may not complete the performance evaluation. Let's say out in the field, that maybe someone who is a career, and he provides direction to others on those occasions. So that's true, provide that information there, but not the official supervisor. On some occasions, I think, where others. Yeah, the question 12 is the question, does the supervisor need additional information? If you've gotten through all of this, and you think there's someone that we have overlooked that we need to know, here is the opportunity to do that. So again, our recommendation is that you read this over, as we have just done, set aside, and then come back to it the next day. You can have your own study, just sit down, do any of this individually or in a group. And then I can say then, walk away from it for 30 minutes, maybe, and then come back and read through it one more time, make sure there's nothing you want to add to the document, and then it's ready to be passed on to the supervisor. So let me pause here. Are there any questions up to this point in regards to the position questionnaire?
So, good morning, here are employee chief of emergency services. I have a little questions, a couple of comments. I guess my question is, with a public safety agency that has now happened, obviously obligations over here, or 90-plus employees, this survey seems very cumbersome, and in three weeks seems realistic. So I guess my question is, you know, about 95% of this information in this questionnaire is contained in our top section. Can we send those instead?
Yes, let me speak to that. We want to give you a very high-quality HR system. And the system we use to evaluate your jobs based on this questionnaire, so we certainly prefer to get the questionnaire completed. Say, "I'm done with 800 of these projects." Again, we never had anybody, once they start with the questionnaire, and they finish it, they're glad they did it. So there's a little bit of, I end up with a star, but you can tell that on it, but it should not be, I think, well, I think it's me as a look at it, and then we're going to do it, and it actually has taken, or say stuff.
I think what you said, Steve, Chief, I really think it would have been a big deal to do with, I think you got, you know, get one person at each different time position, because you've got a lot of people that are in the same position. So each one of them, they can go down, they can just go as they want.
And then, I guess, rather than being, from our perspective, during the public safety nature of our organization and departments, state, federal, and local, we are not asking for job description rewrites, so, I guess, I don't know if that's explained, but we're not, our agency wouldn't, I can, I mean, you can rewrite my job description if you'd like to, but from an operations standpoint, I just can't comply with that.
Eric, they are going to do the job descriptions here. That was part of the bid. They can definitely look at the current ones you have, and then they can make a comment to that, as far as that goes.
Well, I guess my qualif, my question then is, what public safety qualifications does the group have to comply with all of the regulatory pieces that our agency is bound to?
Well, Jay, you can speak to that, if you've worked with public safety for a number of years, also, Jay, you answered, was the head of our partners, there's a training of research for 10 years, was the fire chief, he also served on the, I guess, that does the...
90%.
Yeah, for those sort of positions, I mean, we have some people with all the pensions. And Jay has worked for 30 years with the county government, and specifically with public safety.
And then, this, let me say that this system that we use to evaluate the jobs, to write the pay rates and so forth, is based on a particular structure system, and one of the type of structures that we would produce... If it's a chance, is that though it will be consistent with that, that evaluation system. In other words, that'll be, it'll make perfect sense, if someone is placed in a particular pay rate, they're going to be able to look at the job description, specifically just
So, hold your own time there, Ollie. It's Sheriff Wheeler. You, on these, on these applications that you're, that we're filling out, I'm with, I'm with Eric on this, that 90% of the information is in our job description, so it'd be easier to, to attach the job description to them and go. The problem I end with, whenever you sit down and tell a deputy, if there's five deputies, and they say each, each one is 25% to do a specific job, who makes the determination if it's 25% or 30%? Is that you? You're going to make the determination on what my people do? Because it, that doesn't make sense to me. So if we're only going to do one per job description, then I can just sit down and take the pieces out of my job description and put it in there and be done with this. Is that correct?
Well, I think you could probably use your job description to look at Sheriff. I just be real honest, I've never had difficulty with Sheriff, and, you know, Jay, my former manager is Sheriff, and I'm just a little...
Sure, I would be upset. You got one.
And I'll be the first.
I'll be the first.
I'll just try to get past it as best you can, yet end up with a job that's written attached, and I don't need to do anything about that. Pretty simple, a high quality job, fill out the questionnaire, so I think that's in your hands today. We share with Jay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not going to force you to do it.
Yeah, again, highly recommend, and we can more strongly say, well, absolutely, well, the same with what you gave us.
That's fine.
But, I mean, you see, some of our...
It's a great affair.
So I'd like to listen to the same agreement. So, once the employee has completed the questionnaire, then they would pass that along to their immediate supervisor. And then there's objective supervisor, to provide, and what to ask, what else? Of course, and there are two cautions that we ask supervisors to observe. One is that under no circumstances should they change or alter the employee's answers under part one, just let your employees' answers stand. And then, number two, don't make any statements or comments about the employee's work. To keep in mind that this is, this instrument is designed to evaluate the job, the person goes, and the job that the law does. We're obviously happy to say someone says, "This person does a great job," but we don't really need that kind of information, especially in this... And then we ask the supervisor to describe the employee's position as you said, and show how well that's what the functions of the department. And then we ask the supervisor to go back and look at the list of major duties that the employee has provided. And tell us which ones, you as the supervisor, think are most important. And then, question 13, do you think there's something that the employee has learned about, this is the chance to make observations? If you think the employee has said something that's not more important, this is your chance for a change, as well. And then keep in mind, of course, in addition to the, if you had to process in addition to talking, you're just a different employee, the situation, and so we have to ask the supervisors and the department heads, so we talk to department heads, not just talk about that job, and about certain other jobs in the department, as well, so we can get a lot of time to talk with the department. And then the department head would, I'm sorry, the supervisor would sign this, pass it on to the department head. Likewise, we give the department head a chance for comments, and place it, just not to have to, there. So it's pretty straightforward. Get back to the other screen here. All right, so in addition to the questionnaire, we also want to make sure that we communicate with employees, and so make sure they are on the questionnaire. So along with the questionnaire, we've asked, we'll ask that an explanatory letter be sent out, versus a sort of kind of overview of what the project is about. We also provided a PowerPoint video, which is a really, I guess, slotted-down version, where you just end up walking through the questionnaire. So any employees who want to watch that, can watch that, and I think that answers almost all the questions they might have about the questionnaire. And then, once the questionnaires have been completed and returned to us, I think we will schedule the interviews. As I said, that would be a week. Should I get that right? The week of October 20th is when we are helping them do those interviews. And then we will interview approximately 40% of the county's 351 full-time employees and that recovery, that's a great, that will probably talk to more than 40%, because we want to make sure we speak to at least one person in every position. So if you have a position, you have multiple people in that job, we might not speak to every one of them, we want to make sure we speak to at least a sample of those people. And then for every job where there's only one person in that job, we'll make sure we talk to that person, so every job title will be interviewed as part of this process. And we'll only be allowed that for the first quarter. We'll conduct those, help those interviews by telephone. These interviews are generally conducted one-on-one. We want to get the best information from employees who are just talking with them, you know, as well on a basis, some employees are, for whatever reason, they just are insisted that they're coworkers in the company, for this process. We had a company small, or it was maybe two, maybe three, perhaps, on most, we can find that's best, that is, that talk, that is, the interview process, that you talk to, maybe some of the most experienced people in the position, plus, of the job that are in the company. And then finally, we want to say that our business, the jobs that we have, well, we need on that is that our team has so many years of experience, we were doing projects like this. County governments all across the country, and the state of Missouri, we've suffered all in three decades, I'll put a background to the table with this, when we come to, you know, we're new in quotation marks, because we want to understand, that even though we have that background, when we come to local county, the new East Townville interviews, do you need some questionnaire, we are coming to the part of the U of A, we need to be done, how the jobs are done there. So we bring our background knowledge, and we use that to learn what we need to learn from you interviews. Jay, would you like to speak about the, if I was to have a questionnaire?
Sure, I'll be glad to talk about it there, like we're saying, in fact. Since most positions are clear, as the meeting is sound, and overtime, we're not, you know, trains getting paid overtime, well, I need a few of your employees to complete this one more. We'll request that you will be sent out, so employees have a intention of, we have to... We all know that local positions are often not as sound, and management positions are as sound, so it's going to be those positions in, down in the middle of the pay plan, that will need this form completed for, usually involving maybe 10 employees.
So, speak, would you like to introduce our team?
Oh, sure. So three of us off the surface, the project leaders, and anytime we have communication between ourselves and local county, it will be one of the three of us will be leading that, while also, we'll be joined by Brian at work. Brian has a background in public work, so I'm listening here, Jim Hansburg, who will be working with EMS, on those areas, with Jay. I have over 30 years of experience, due to this type of work. Jay and I, Jay and I have worked together for 30-plus years. We've been in business, almost 70 years, across the country, and Jay, as you say, 700 projects award that we work on together. Yeah, because all the teams have been together for a long time, so we enjoy working together. And I think you'll, you'll find this easy, because it feels a bit, especially during the employee interviews, I think that people need, you understand a bit about the job that we're talking to. So Jay, can you say something about your background, please?
Sure. I worked for Athens Fire Department Unified Government in Georgia from 1975 to 2014. I retired as the HR director, and so I worked with all the departments, the many people throughout my career. At that time, I retired, we had 6,850 employees government-wide. Also worked as consultant for the coronation and student government at the University in Georgia for 30 years, developing classification and compensation plans for local governments throughout the state of Georgia. And that is things that the United States has gone, almost 27 years, and we've been working with different local governments throughout the United States.
And Greg, you also have worked on your background, please?
Yeah, so I've worked with Janet State, Convent Socials, for over 20 years, and over hundreds of projects, with county and municipal governments around the country. For this project, I'm going to be wearing multiple hats, I'll be participating in the interview process, also being, developing the salary survey, and conducting a custom salary survey for you, and then I'll be, we will, we'll do general surveys.
Okay, and then, we also want to mention Linda St. Graves. Linda provides administrative support for the, for the project. You may not have a lot of chance to interact with Linda, but we all miss like to give her a shout-out, and let you know that Linda's working behind the scenes on the project as well.
Our good advice for, and Jay, I'm, for you, and I have questions, I'm changing some kind of, I'll do, I'll put the schedule together.
So I'll develop a preliminary interview schedule, and I'll send it to Jessica, to distribute to you all. For your interview, I'll interview at least one employee in every different position title, and of course, at least 40% government-wide. If there are several employees with the same job titles, such as Deputy Sheriff, we'll put a blank... put a blank line, we'll appoint them, and they have the sheriff, the lady, the man, and who we would need to talk to. Of course, we're going to do this by telephone, so we'll need to give out the phone numbers for each person that then we will be talking with. Um, if employees need to change their interview time, we're honest with that, as long as it stays with the same hours. At this time, we want to turn it over to Jessica or Drew, I think so. I think I'll say if someone has a lead and, uh, for some reason they can't talk to us that week, it is like we can also make up the interview. Uh, we burn it. Yes. Jessica, please.
This is Debbie. I'm sorry, I was just gonna, um, say, as far as on the questionnaires, if we have somebody that that position's not being filled right now, it's vacant, how should that department approach that?
You should give us, you should bill it in, uh, separate position, so we'll include it in the, um, yeah, in the back plan.
So either the, either the department director or someone else in the department who knows that job really quick.
Yep.
Click there.
Coming from the HR part of it, as far as the beginning of information on that particular employee and the hire date, um, is that verified by HR before you guys look at it, or is it after, or does that matter? Do you want these questionnaires, I guess, collected by Jessica and HR here, and then submit it to you guys, or do you want the departments to submit it directly to you?
No, you should, or somebody should get, uh, call me, you should, or do that. After the information about hire date and things like that, we've got a couple of, and so we won't rely on that, uh, information. It's just helpful for us, uh, when we're interviewing, to take a quick glance and know how long someone has worked.
And that is definitely what that hire date is, is the date they were hired, not in that position, if that.
Correct.
Okay.
That's right, that's right.
Okay. And I know the schedule that you put up, as far as how long to fill out these questionnaires, I know our people are busy, our department heads are busy, and this is a new added burden to their list of things to do. Is there any wiggle room in, in the schedule?
We'd like for there not to be, because if we gave you two weeks, it'll take three, if we give you three weeks, it'll take four. So I think people just need to sort their end and do the questionnaire. We don't get a problem, we can't start the project. But for, in order for us to, to do this in a timely fashion, it'd be very helpful if it's done, but they've got about two and a half weeks left to do.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, we never give anybody work with that. Everybody's been, uh, and everybody's busy. So I don't think this is, I don't think it's going to be as hard as the mission. People tend to believe it is.
And I'll.
Is that fair enough, Jane? Yeah, because remember, we are looking at holidays. In terms of the salary survey, we're going to be best served and get better results back on that salary survey. We can get that wrapped up before we will, uh, start, uh, kind of taking off for Christmas. So that, that's kind of the, we need, we need to get everything else done before we begin the survey, so.
Yeah, but basically we need to get the salary survey now completed, for things, you know, as long as possible, get people to complete the salary survey between things and, and Christmas. Yeah, it used to be that, that way, but Jane is not, very well, yeah. Yeah, so that's the holidays.
This is Sam Bushman, I'm from Ziegler Pistor. We have a new assessor that came into office as of September one. So he's got two weeks he's been here, so I don't think he knows really his employees or anything, so, you know, we can help him, but I'm looking at, I'm looking at, at our new assessor, and I'm thinking, I don't, this is.
Well, you know, Jane actually has a background in property, but Jane has a.
Yeah. Absolutely. I'll be the one, um, interviewing in that department. Also, Brian, we're, I'd be interviewing in that department. He's a certified praiser also, but I used to work in the taxes, so I was years ago, so nothing very valuable.
Are you looking for additional work?
Be kind and gentle to him, in other words.
We're hiring.
When you mentioned that about the marketplace and looking at that, can you explain to this group, since probably this is the last time we'll all be together until it's done, how you guys handle that, as far as what you look at, how far out you go, and?
So, uh, Greg, you may have to start, I'll lose my voice a little bit, but we'll survey fifteen different organizations, and we'll coordinate views of select groups. And I would say, we'd say probably in Missouri, if we look at counties your size, I would also look at Jeff City, because you're right there, that's your, your county seat, and try to find, uh, counties that surround you that may be common, but not too rural, and also other counties across the state that are common, even size, if I was, Jane, to add that.
Basically, um, we're going to also, when we interview in the department head, in each department, we talk to them about, you know, who are you, that's already losing employees today, so we want your feedback, um, do you want to include it in the salary survey?
So you'll be, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Of course.
So some of the comparison you're talking about, it's not just going to be county entities, correct? Because I lose people to the state of Missouri, to the Missouri State Highway Patrol, uh, and I'm looking at Locke, and he's losing them to Attorney General's Office.
Yes, as I said, we'll have a discussion of the department heads as we go through, as we have said, we're not determining those, we won't, we won't decide any close-in on you, it would be a cooperative decision. And, uh, in terms of the salary surveys, how, if we, I'll be developing it, what I mean by that is, I'll use the information from the questionnaires, as well as when they have the process, to develop a set of short descriptions for each cer, each position that we're surveying for. Uh, we'll send that out in the survey so that other organizations are looking to see if they have a job that matches, uh, they'll, you know, sometimes the title could be the same title in different organizations, but the job could be entirely different. So we'll do our best to make sure we're meeting everyone's values, and by the end of it, custom descriptions for each position in the survey.
So we're, yes, so it's not necessarily we're doing one for every, every employee, we're just wanting to do one per, per position?
And the way they're looking at is.
About, we'll choose benchmark positions, probably forty to forty-five, uh, positions will be the ones that we'll survey, that we know we can get those matches on.
Because basically, and that's how a lot of them do it, is they take a, a good percentage of them, and like they say, they usually go more than forty percent by the time they're done.
Right.
But with unique titles and unique job descriptions, it would be hard to take something to market, depending on what they find out.
I don't remember, I think we have, I can't remember if we have nine job descri, uh, descriptions, so all I, uh, from what he said, we wanted our, our experienced people to be able to interview. So we would just do nine, uh, my experienced people, and then he's still going to interview, uh, more supervisors than that, and we can give them names for the job descriptions that are under there, but, uh, because, I'll, I'll be honest with you, if you're wanting me to do a hundred and fifteen of these before October third, it ain't going to happen.
Well, like she has said, you can do a group of them. So if you have a group of deputies, then.
If we do two hours per form, that's two hundred and sixty-eight hours for me. So is that overtime covered by the commission?
No.
Exactly. And that's why, that's why I'm trying to dwindle this down to as little as possible. I, I can handle a little bit, but I can't do three hundred hours before October third, there's no way.
Again, this is something the commission paid for, they hope everybody works to get this, get them the information they need, so they can make a better determination. But I think if you do these as groups, even though you have ninety people, how many of, how many titles? You said nine?
Yeah.
So then one of the, sorry, you guys go ahead, you're used to this, I shouldn't be talking.
So right, you have nine positions, and you only need to complete nine questionnaires.
Right.
And you, you can either do that by group, or you can designate, you're mostly experienced with one or two people in each of those job titles to work together with the questionnaire, and of course you can review that.
That makes, that makes more sense.
Yes, right, so no, that's certainly not right, but you have a, you, you may have nine positions, if you have ninety employees, that's because, no, eight, ninety questionnaires, we need not, we don't want, no, no.
Question, uh, like, my maintenance department, I've got, uh, staff of seven, I'm the director, I got two assistants, but everybody else is classified as maintenance. So I just need one maintenance, two, uh, one assistant, and myself, right?
That, that, as long as you, as long as you feel that all of those people, all your employees are currently classified as maintenance, and they're all doing pretty much the same job, and, and they're, maybe they're, they're not, maybe they're disminuted, and you, and you want us to consider that, you can have these, you can complain that based on the job, do you know what I mean, make any sense, maybe Jane, maybe not.
I don't know, I think they're doing the same thing, they have the same questionnaire.
Okay.
He thinks jobs are different.
We pretty well did everything the same.
No, no, that's fine.
So do you need a new front page for each one of those that he's considering, um, for that particular questionnaire? Do you still want?
We would appreciate, we would appreciate that, yes, that, that really just helps us.
Just that front page, do it four times, but have the same data behind it.
Yeah.
Does anybody else?
We don't need a separate copy for each one, just a separate cover sheet.
Why would you be here?
Debbie, is, is the, the study going to include benefits of the comparables as well?
No, that's going to be a separate study. And really, Jane, you don't talk about how, really, that can assess your benefits.
Do you currently use a broker for your benefits, like for your health insurance?
We're partially self-funded, but we do go through a broker to get to the insurance itself, to the vendor.
Right. We would recommend using your broker to give you the information on what other jurisdictions are, are doing, what their benefits are.
I guess when, the question is basically, when you go to the market and look at all these other employers, are you going to consider our benefit package as well as their benefit package when you're analyzing the value of that job, or is, is that really have nothing to do with it?
It has nothing to do with it, no, it wants you to have the benefits, but we also want you to have the salaries. So we're going to do a salary to salary comparison, at least get you to the mean of the market, probably above the mean of the market, as far as like they're giving. And, uh, so this, when you say you do total compensation, it's just, it really does not make any sense, uh, to, to complain benefits and, uh, salaries. To do them certainly makes sense, but to complain them does not make sense.
Well, and, and we've always offered a good competitive benefits that I can center, but we do want to make sure those are in line with, to me, who you're comparing us to, to, the, who you're comparing us to people that have the benefits to, but maybe that. Sure.
Eric Land, we're Public Works Director. Uh, our department has a career path for entry level, level employees coming in, and then other jobs too. There's a career path on how they can progress over the years. Are you looking at something like that in this study, or is that going to be ours?
Absolutely. We have, uh, career ladders for people, say if someone kind of comes in as a road maintenance worker, um, they can, after a couple of years, if they're, you're doing a job, even less than that, they can become a senior, uh, road maintenance worker, and then someone can be an equipment operator, and then become a heavy equipment operator. So we'll have a career paths like that.
So that'll be part of your, the product that you produce will have a recommendation on that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we always do. And we realize how hard, um, some of these young people that require, give required a class A, um, you know, driver's license, so we want to make sure we get you competitive in the market for that.
You take into account, uh, incentives? For instance, JCPD offers a ten thousand dollar signup incentive for sworn personnel, five thousand for unsworn.
That, we're not looking at incentives.
Okay.
Well, you, you go look at, you, you know pretty well what your competitive.
Yeah, I don't like them.
Well, you know, everybody's using that COVID money for, you know, like, ten thousand dollars signup, things like that. I think that's kind of gone away, but, and this is a lot of problem in some jurisdictions that they offer.
Can I search the?
But there, we'll say, as you go through the process, I think you have, um, you know, our telephone numbers and your phone numbers to talk, get any problems that you have. Uh, we'll talk with, you know, all of the department heads, and like the officials that you have in the department. We'll probably spend forty-five minutes to an hour with you about every job in your department. And then we kind of fan out, and we talk to the supervisors, and they, they take twenty to thirty minutes, and the, the employees will take it. So it's not very burdensome time. And we suggest that, uh, so the interviews, they should give us their mobile numbers, they don't have to be, you know, fixed in place, and that just makes it a lot easier on the employee, that having to come to a central location. Would you agree, Greg, and Jane?
Yeah, that's where we influence.
Yeah, yes, we, we always, uh, we may be in the field, but we always, uh, we're in the same place, and we, uh, that is when we're, we're conducting the interviews, so we'll, we're bonded of that.
Can I search, do you guys have any other questions? I don't want to bring up anything else. Okay. Nobody else have any questions? Go once, twice?
My only, my only question is for my, I mean, I'm the supervisor, but I'm not a county employee, and I'm not an elected official.
What's your title?
I'm, uh, marshal, court martial.
So.
So I have deputy marshals under, under me, who are county employees. I'm a state employee, so I'm technically not.
You wouldn't fill out a questionnaire?
Correct, but, but I then, I, they're, they're handing it in to me, and I'm reviewing it?
Yes.
Okay.
As our supervisor.
Yes, we appreciate, we appreciate that, and that's what we're.
We hire Cole County General Office. Um, and whether or not county employees were, you know, employed, and it's more a sensor salaries, or more than one, or more sensor salaries, um, and dictates our job, job descriptions, are we supposed to be behind us?
I wouldn't think so, would you, Jane?
They're.
You're still a county employee, right?
I did not.
We write the checks.
I didn't get anything from the county board, so I'm listening, you're not employed.
No, you should have them, Toby, hang on.
Hold on.
You should have them, uh, on the list of county employees, they are paid by the county, so we did include them in.
Well, do you have any, you got?
I lost half of them.
Okay. Is this the, um, family center?
Yes.
Okay, I thought it was the county board.
Family Center sounds.
We are the county board of the facility, uh, we're in, it's called my, our, our family center, but we are the county board.
If, if they're, if they're employees, then we'll, if they're state employees, like in a lot of states, you have district attorney's offices, it will have a mix of, um, you know, county DAs, it was a state, it was, you know, county.
Okay, but we are county employees, so.
Toby, you're, you're getting reimbursed for state employ, as, as the county pays for these employees, so they're included, they've always been included as county employees, even though you're getting reimbursement from the state for some of their salary, not all of their salary, so.
Okay. So you should, other state, they should be included in there.
Yes.
Is the county able to set the salary for these positions?
Well, as of, they can submit a budget and ask for certain salaries, um, yes, we, the commission, um, has to accept those salaries, or go back to the court, uh, court of something, court and bank to.
No, no.
So.
So I say, you do more census salaries. So Jane, maybe this is something that's not in this meeting, but I think that, so we can understand, you know, the college system, catch twenty-two, essentially.
We're asking, we're looking for, like, where the, the, yeah, the, yeah. Did you slide that?
Could you slide that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you can get it adjusted, and then spread it. So time, you know, later on today, we can discuss that.
Questions? Well, I think that, unless anybody else has any other questions...
Well, we appreciate your time, you put us through our paces today, I would say. And so we're looking forward to it, and I would just, just say that we're going to do a very good... I think that you get good reports, just to everybody. We're looking forward to it, and we want to thank you for your minds, for your attention.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Debbie, do you need to give, what, you or whoever is going to be sending out, and when, and...
Well, the questionnaires are definitely in every department's hands. So we're going to try to follow these people's schedule, they set the schedule. If you can get them back to either Sheila...
Somebody needs to send us the schedule.
Just hang on, we got other...
It's in the letter that Debbie sent. It's in that letter.
It's in the letter that...
But this is a meeting, so one person at a time.
So we're going to definitely try to meet their schedule and have them back by October 3, no, right?
Yeah, October 3.
To the HR department or Jessica, either one, and...
Do you want it paper or electronic?
We're going to scan them in if you do paper, but if you want to do electronic, that would be the best, because that's how they're going to get their data.
We can scan them in an email, well, it depends how big it is.
Yeah.
Yep.
It could get pretty big, on how many you do. And so let's, let's just plan on it, having them to Sheila or Jessica by the 3.
That's okay.
Okay, so I'm going to give you one for my job title, one for my assistant, and one for maintenance.
And you could get your maintenance together, have them, the five of...
That would probably be better.
Have the five of them do the questionnaire.
That's what I'm going to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going, just all of mine are going to be in one group, and you will get one question, I mean, they're all do the exact same job duties, so I would say they will fill it out as a group.
If you want to fill out a different form, so just so they know...
Yeah, I'll fill out it...
That all of those employees were accounted in this group, right? So fill out this top one for each one of them, but only fill out the back as a whole. Okay.
So, question, I'm in any direction. Are we really going to let these people rewrite our job descriptions for our public safety agency? I have grave concern about that.
I think you stepped out of the room when they introduced the one person they had for...
I don't, I, whether they have experience or not, they are not here, they are not responsible for the safety of citizens of Cole County. And I do not feel comfortable with anybody rewriting job descriptions that dictate our operations, the education, and the requirements of our staff.
I think you need to give them the respect to write the app, to write the job.
Absolutely not, I am the chief of emergency services.
Can I finish?
No.
Let me finish.
I'm not addressing you.
Okay, then, address them.
I think you need to tone it down.
Yeah.
I, I think, let them do their job. And if you don't like it, then you make an argument against what they've done.
Absolutely.
And I, I respect your opinion on this, but I think we let them, we're hiring them to do a job. We don't have to accept everything they give us.
My understanding is that we're hiring them to do a salary study.
Yes.
I don't, I don't know how writing job descriptions that dictate how we operate.
We didn't ask them to give us 10 commandments on how to run the county, and we'll live by those commandments, not, that's not what they're going to do for us. These guys have been in business for 30-plus years. I trust that they will do a decent job, and if they don't, we'll tell them. But I, I'm not ready to cut them out at the, at the, at the beginning.
From my understanding is they'll take our, what we put in, and they'll craft it into a job description. They're not going to change the duties of our staff, or the percentage they do. They're going to take it and all put us into a standard format, because right now, we all have different formats for our job descriptions. This is my understanding, correct? So they're not going to change what our staff do, or the qualifications. They're going to put them all in a standard format, and then they're to compare our salaries to other entities that are comparable to us. That's what I understand. So I don't think that...
I, I understand that piece of it, and, and that's fine. But again, our job descriptions are written in a format that is unique to our accrediting bodies and done in the manner and format in which they require. So, again, I know that I'm being hyper vigilant about this, but a lot of work has gone into building our policy, procedure manual, and our job descriptions to comply with accreditation and be unique for our agency. And I have a whole lot of heartache allowing somebody that, I don't know who they are, to, to come in and mess with that.
Well, they said they'd be talking to each department head and elected officials, so make that clear to them.
So just have an open mind about it, I'm not crazy about salary studies either, but just, we need as much information, and I think Harry is correct, that we'll be able to accept what we want to with it. I'm, I'm more looking at the salaries, so tired of having meetings where we have to kind of be subjective and pick and choose winners and losers, and that's really what brought this on. It's not that we want them to write, rewrite your policies, procedures, job descriptions, stuff, and so... I'm fine with leaving that alone as much as possible. If you don't like it, then that's when we need to know about it. But I think we just, everybody needs to get us as much information as we can, even the family center, Fringer Center. I think we need that information, it, it might help the argument of the courts, or it might help our arguments about the courts when it comes down to budget time. So I just, I think we need all of it in there, so just take a little time, deal with a little bit of the pain, and let's see what happens with it, so...
Debbie, how much are you going to pre-review before you send them off? If there's...
Not, not drop them.
No, no, I mean, if there's questions that aren't answered. Are you going to say, department elected official, you didn't answer question 12 on the questionnaire, you need to complete it?
No.
That's not up for us to look at.
We're just collecting them and sending them on. If they want to go back and reach back out to that supervisor that signed off on there, then that's up to them.
We might look at this front page to make sure that information's correct, with the years, length of service, but past that, we don't have any intentions of...
Changing or touching.
Changing or touching it at all.
But they have all of that, am I correct?
What did you give them, did you give them org charts?
No.
Would that be helpful to include?
That might be helpful, if you want to turn it in for, and she, like they said, they're going to meet with each department, so that would be the time to have all that, I would say.
So, and just kind of reiterate, reiterate this, so we're doing, I'm doing, and I don't know if it's...
You guys need to be talking to these two, right, here, Sheila?
The nine, the nine positions, but they want us to do a front sheet for everybody?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
I just wanted to get that right, okay. I just want to make sure that when I turn it in, I'm just calling you, like...
And I don't think they've asked for all the job descriptions that we currently have, have they asked for that?
I've not been involved, Debbie, I've not been asked for anything.
And they really haven't asked that much, as far as just the list of employees.
Should we attach our job descriptions to these two?
I would, if you want to. I would.
I don't think it'd be a bad idea at all.
I mean, because the information is, is, is in the job description, then quite literally, we're going to do some cutting and paste and just, and to fill these out. But I just wanted to, to make sure we'll just attach them to them, too.
I'll just say, I'm very thankful the county commission's looking at doing this. And this, in my five years as a director, salaries has been the most challenging and frustrating and difficult thing I've had to do. And to have some sort of consistency to allow me to direct our public works people out in the field instead of having to deal with this, or assist me in doing my... I, I hope the result is big for, for us. We're, it's just, our county structure is very inconsistent on salaries to begin with, so just getting something in place, I think, is a win-win. And I know each, you know, there's some different feelings about how it's going to affect us, but I think just have an open mind, see what the end result is, and we'll, we'll, it's a good outcome, so...
I, you know, when we did the interview for this particular group, these, definitely these people stood out as one of the better, the best one, obviously, so, so...
Anything else?
Bring it up.
I would entertain that motion, just, sure, I'm standing recessed. Make the motion to stand in recess until...